The City of Riverbank, in case you weren't positive where you are. Planning Commission meeting, City Hall North. It's Tuesday, May 16th, and we're commencing at 6:00 PM. Could we have a call to order, please?
Chair McKenney is absent. Vice Chair King. Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Tobacco.
Here.
And Commissioner Villepiedwall is also absent.
Conflict of interest. Any Planning Commission member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time.
Question. I just want, are you able to hear him? He has no fire.
I'm sorry about that.
Just checking, thank you.
Well, now I'll be a little nervous. Okay, seeing none, moving on to public comments. Public comments, no action to be taken. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak only once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, states your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the Planning Commission Board. Does anyone have any comments that they'd like to make? Seeing none, moving on. Consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are to be acted upon by a single action of the Planning Commission Board unless otherwise requested by an individual Planning Commission member for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of the staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll-call vote. Does anyone have anything that they want to pull from the consent calendar to be acted upon separately?
No.
No, okay, then. Item 2A, posting of the agenda. The agenda for May 16th, 2017, Planning Commission meeting was posted on the City Community Center Bulletin Board, City North and South Bulletin Boards, Post Office, City website, and emailed to the library on May 12th, 2017. Item 2B, approval of the agenda. This provides an opportunity for the Planning Commission or staff to recommend that an item be placed on the agenda for discussion or to adjust the proposed agenda to allow an item to be taken out of order. An item 2C, approval of the minutes of the March 21st, 2017, Planning Commission meeting, having been read by the individual commissioners and stands approved as submitted. I think everyone that was here was here, right? Okay. Recommendation is to recommend that the Planning Commission approve the consent calendar by roll-call vote.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a vote.
Vice Chair King.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
And Commissioner Tobacco.
Yes.
Item 3, a presentation. Weed abatement, Neighborhood Improvement Officer, Michelle Garcia.
Yes, over the past year, there has been some questions about weed abatement and wondering how we go about it. I've asked Michelle Garcia to come and do a brief presentation for you, a quick PowerPoint, and I think you'll find this very interesting.
For those of you who haven't met, my name is Michelle Garcia. It's nice to see all of you this evening. So just a quick presentation of the City of Riverbank Weed Abatement Program. So in 2008, the City of Riverbank accepted the Weed Abatement Program back from the Fire Department. They had been doing the postings and enforcement and such. At that time, we determined that we were able to take it back. So the annual starting date, it varies from year to year, and this year, to gain compliance prior to being in a critical situation, weed abatement started, well, we kicked off the season in mid-April. And just a little background, too, of our need for weed abatement. It's not only necessary on vacant lots in our more rural areas, but it's also needed in our developed areas due to a couple of different things. First and foremost being foreclosure abandonment, and then also, sometimes property owners just don't realize the potential for the fire hazard of their dry grass and weeds. So here's an example of where I had to post a property. It would have been vacated due to foreclosure and was sitting there for a little while. Weeds grew up, so I went out and posted it, sent notices out, and at that property, we actually did have to do a forced cleanup on it because they did not respond to our request to clean up. So the process is when we receive a complaint, either from the public or a staff member, and it's a potential fire hazard, the Neighborhood Improvement Division generates a report to investigate the property. An initial letter is sent out, and on there, we note the possible violation of the noxious growth, tall weeds, grass, et cetera. And then on that, once the violation is confirmed, well, once the letter's sent out, it's generally a week to two weeks, depending on the time of the year. At the beginning of weed abatement season, I'll generally give a couple of weeks before I'll do any follow-up after sending the letter. But as time goes on and it gets, the weeds get drier and drier, more potential for fire hazard, then I generally only give a week if I send a letter out at all. As we get farther into the summer, like June, July, I'm generally, as soon as I get the complaint, I'm going out within the next day or two and posting, just because the hazard is so much, there's so much more potential for fire. So the letter, once the property is posted with a notice to clean property, then we also send out a letter that day, which is a notice to clean property letter, and at that time, they have 10 days to take care of it. At that 10-day end of the time period, if they have not, then I will hire a contractor to go out and do a forced cleanup on the property. And depending on the size of the lot, they, if it's like a really large lot, vacant lot, we'll most likely have it disced, and if not, then if it's a smaller location, we'll have it mowed and generally with like a weed eater or something like that, just to clean it up. So here are some properties that have been posted throughout town in the past. We have the one vacant lot on the left-hand side, and then a residence, and then also a private-owned field by one of the area sports teams. So the municipal code we use to enforce this is our, it's 97.06, and that's what gives us the authority to do the forced cleanup. So if the property owner does not comply within the 10 days after we've posted the property, then we have the authority to go ahead and process it for a forced cleanup. And at that time, when we do the forced cleanup, we do send them an invoice for a citation, which is generally $100, and then they also are charged for whatever amount it costs to clean the property. So that's basically it, and with the continued efforts to eliminate hazardous situations such as tall, dry weeds, we not only improve the looks of the city, but ensure the safety of our citizens. So does anybody have any questions?
How high do weeds have to be before their violation?
Anything over six inches tall is considered a violation. So even if it's, even if it's not weed abatement season, and I get a complaint of somebody has tall grass or their weeds are growing, anytime it's over six inches, they're in violation, so regardless of what time of the year. It's just during our weed abatement season, we take a more active, you know, stance on it and make sure that we're posting and such so that we don't have fires.
If, if a property is under foreclosure, how long does it take? Who, who does it actually belong to still?
Well, a lot of times, even when it's, we know it's a foreclosure property, I've contacted the owners and they say, well, it's in foreclosure, a lot of times, the bank don't, the banks don't take possession of it right away. So I go, whatever the county assessor has in their records, that's who's the responsible party. So whether it's the actual citizen that used to live there, or it's the bank, that's who I hold responsible, whoever the county assessor has at that time. Yeah. Uh-huh. Any other questions? No?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item 4.1, parcel map 17-0002, Narcisco and Adela Hernandez, Resolution The applicant is requesting to divide an existing parcel containing one dwelling unit into two parcels. The project is exempt from the requirements of SEQA guidelines pursuant to Section 15315, Minor Land Divisions. Property is located at 3625 Kansas Street. The parcel number is 132-054-034, and is owned, single-family residential, R1. The general plan designation for the site is low-density residential. So at this time, we open it to the public to discuss this, or?
Actually, I'll do a brief presentation first.
Very fine.
Okay. As you mentioned, this is a parcel map. For folks that don't know, a parcel map is required if you have four lots and a remainder lot, or less. Anything above that would be a subdivision map. And the difference between the two is the parcel map is heard by the Planning Commission, but then the Community Development Director, or me in that, in that spot, and the city engineer review the final map. A subdivision map, the final map, has to go in front of the city council. So as our chair had said, it's a request to split one 18,480 square-foot parcel into two smaller parcels. Parcel 2 does have an existing residence on it. The project location is on Kansas Avenue, near Terminal Ave, and bisected by 8th on the other side. This is the parcel divided into two. There is a little bit of an issue with a fence not being quite on the property line, but these two property owners will eventually work that out. As you can see on parcel 2, we have the existing house and garage, and this, parcel 1 is currently Here's an aerial view of the site. Here's the existing house and the vacant lot. As was mentioned, this is low-density, both the general plan designation and the current With requirements, both parcels must meet minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet, and that requirement is met. One is almost 10,000 square feet, and the other is 8,500 square feet. The existing residence on parcel 2 must have, once you divide the parcel, the existing residence should have all the required setbacks, which includes a minimum side setback of five feet from parcel 1, which it does have. It has actually 15 feet. The environmental, the, to become, to be exempt pursuant to the guidelines of SEQA, the split must take place in an urbanized area zoned residential, be four fewer parcels. It must be in conformance with the general plan and zoning, no variance needed, all services available. It could not have been split in the previous two years, and no average slope greater than 20 percent. It meets all these requirements, therefore, it is exempt. So this is a pretty basic lot split. In reviewing the plans, we didn't come up against any red flags or problems with the site. We do have the applicants here tonight, if you have any questions or if they would like to make a few comments.
Sure, I'll open it up to the public. If you'd like to come up and make a statement, you can.
Yes.
Please.
Please sign in.
Say your name.
My name is Dave Laughlin, and I own the property at 3618 Iowa Street, which backs up to Mr. Hernandez's property. And you mentioned there was a fence that had to be adjusted. Is that the side fence or the back fence?
It would be the rear fence.
Okay, so me and Mr. Hernandez just split, if you can go back to that picture, please?
See this area right into here.
Yeah, that fence has been replaced, and that fence has been moved three feet onto my property. We measured the property, me and his son, from the edge of his property, there was a stake, to, and gave it 147 feet. Either one.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, so it's three feet moved onto my property, and from my property, which is at 3618 Iowa Street, was moved from the sidewalk, 147 feet, to where the fence is now. Okay? Now, I don't know if that is, in part in the, you know, regulations, that that's what it is, but that's what it says on the plans that I have. And I've owned that house, well, my dad owned that house, so I've been there for all my life. Well, I don't live there now, but, you know, I own that house. So I knew where the fences were at and everything. Okay? That's the only question.
Okay. Was it a question, or are you satisfied with where the fences are now?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just wanting to know if, you mentioned in the statement that the home, the property owners would have to agree on the fence, since we've already moved the fence, then I would presume that would be okay with?
Yes, what I meant was that good neighbor fences are usually a civil matter that the city does not get involved with.
Okay.
So in the moving of the fences between two friendly neighbors, it sounds like you accomplished that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Hey, does anyone else have a comment that they'd like to make? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to us. Anyone have any discussion that they'd like to have?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One is, what is an internal lot? In there, it says it's internal, does that mean it doesn't have a side on a side street or something like that?
Correct.
The parcel on the right has a driveway down the right-hand side to the garage that's in the back. Correct?
Oh, I see, on the right side?
Parcel number 2, it has a driveway that goes along the right side of the house.
Correct.
Back to that garage. When this is divided, will parcel 1 be under any requirements, design requirements, as far as, you know, usually what we're doing now is the garage sits back from the house, but they're connected or anything like that? Or will they be able to do the same as parcel 2, as far as developing if they put a house in?
I see, if, if parcel 1 is sold and decides to develop, then they could have a house with or without an attached garage. I mean, they have to have a garage, but it can either be attached or detached.
And one final one. Once, once, once it's approved that it's a separate parcel, I've noticed over in parcel 1 that it's primarily, or there's some garden in there and that, too, but there's also, I think, a storage container and some cars and things like that there. If it's a separate lot all by itself, is that allowed to have that stay there?
Well, if, if it has, say, if those vehicles are inoperable, or there are other things, you know, kind of dumped there, it should be cleaned up, but we normally work on a complaint basis. If the owner, if it's divided into two lots and the owner of parcel 2 still owns both lots, I don't see where there would be any problem with them keeping a garden there until they sold that property.
With that simple thing that the city would work out, I mean, we don't get involved in looking at that for tonight.
No.
So does parcel 1 have sewer and water and electricity available to it?
Right, everything is in the street and available for, I, I don't think that there's would be any connections. They would probably have to pay for the water and the sewer connection, but they should all be in the street. It's a, it's a developed area that's been there for a while.
Anything from you?
Yep, pretty clean.
Okay, then the recommendation is that we approve by roll-call vote. The, so we need a?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept 4.1 tentative map, tentative parcel map application, 17.002, as discussed.
Vice Chair King.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart. And Commissioner Tobacco.
Yes.
All right, the item is passed, thank you.
Item 4.2, CUP 17-0006, William Enskip, Resolution 2017-009, request to construct a 480-square-foot detached garage. Conditional use permit is being requested because Section 153-032-F of the Riverbank Municipal Municipal Code requires a use permit for the construction of accessory structures which do not meet the requirements of the Section 153-031-B. The project is exempt from the requirements of SEQA guidelines pursuant to Section 15332 A through E, Class 32, Infield Development Projects. Property is located at 3954 Prince Arrow Drive, parcel number 075-038-015, and is owned, single-family residential, R1. The general plan designation for the site is low-density residential. And do we have a presentation on this?
Do, thank you. As you've mentioned, this is a conditional use permit for the construction of a detached accessory building, a 480-square-foot garage. The, the purpose of the conditional use permit is because the 480-square-foot accessory structure is 38.15 percent of the living area of the residential dwelling, and it should be 20 percent, or a CUP is required. Here's a, a site plan. The proposed structure is back here. There are a couple of smaller structures in the side here that will be removed. There is a driveway started here, and there will be like those mow strips, those 30-inch strips that lead to this garage through the backyard. There's a pool off to the side, and another structure over here, a gazebo. You can see from the elevations, they, you know, propose a man door and a garage door that faced the house. These windows on the side will face into their yard. According to the general plan, in order to grant any use permit, the applicant must have evidence that supports the application, which shows that the maintenance or operation or establishment of this building is not gonna negatively, negatively affect the building, or the neighborhood, excuse me. So as you can see from this aerial, the, the residence is right here, so there are no neighbors behind it that would be impacted by that garage building. On the, let me go back just a second here. For the, whoops, I did that again. So for the neighbor on this side right here, the garage will not have any windows that look into their yard, and then this is the rear of the building with no windows that face that field. Staff recommends that, or, I see, I'm confused because I put the wrong title up here. I put the recommendation, but this is for SEQA, this front part. So we ask that you find the project is categorically exempt under Section 15332 A through E of the SEQA guidelines, and approve the conditional use permit pursuant to the findings and conditions contained in the resolution. It basically states that this building will not have a negative impact on the neighbors or the neighborhood. If you have any question, Mr. Enskip is here, and you're welcome to make a few comments on your project if you like. Oh, yes.
We'll open the public hearing to Mr. Enskip. Go ahead.
Good evening. I'd just like to let you know that this will be strictly for personal use, non-business purposes, and it's basically just a hobby storage-type building.
Okay, so when you say hobby storage, is there, will there be work done out in the building? I'm, I'm assuming some of it has to do with vehicles, that you maybe work on vehicles?
Yeah, I, I collect and quasi-restore mostly classic Japanese cars.
So that, so that's one of the hobbies that'll be in there?
Correct.
So when you do the work, that, is there, my, when I went out and looked at it and I looked around, my only, my main concern is, is if you have a hobby shop in your backyard, I'd love to build a wood shop in my backyard. I don't think my neighbors would like that, you know, but, because it's pretty noisy with a wood shop. But the type of work that you're going to do, are there like hours that they're going to be done so that, you know, 2:00 in the morning, you're not out there working on engines? I, does that make sense? I'm just trying to.
Sure.
Figure out how it could affect the neighbors.
Sure, normally, we look at regulations if it were a home business or home occupation, and it's not in this case, it's for his own personal pleasure. But, you know, we would recommend that you, you know, keep the noise levels down, at least, you know, work maybe from 8:00 in the morning till 9:00 or 10:00, you know, something reasonable, so if you've got grinding or sanding or something like that, that it doesn't affect the neighbors.
That's, yeah, I, I'm in good standing with my neighbors, and I currently work in the spaces that I have when I do, and it's all during hours that are respectful of their, of their status and situations.
The, the neighbors were notified within 300 feet, and we have not received any comments or complaints, and I had checked, and there were no code enforcement complaints concerning vehicles or noise.
So, so it wouldn't end up that there's a bunch of cars sitting outside in your yard?
No, absolutely not.
That's all you have?
Okay, we'll close the public hearing then and bring it back to the Planning Commission. Does anyone have any further discussion?
Nope.
Nope, and can I get a motion?
Okay, I'm gonna move for approval of Resolution Number 2017-009, conditional use permit for the construction of a 480-square-foot detached accessory building at 3954 Prince Avenue.
Vice Chair King.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
And Commissioner Tobacco.
Yes.
That passes 3-0.
Thank you.
There is, just for your knowledge, there is a 10-day appeal period, although I don't expect any appeal to be filed, and at that point, if there is none, then you can apply for a building permit.
Okay, great, thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to item 4.3, Architecture and Site Plan Review, 17-0003, Lucky House Restaurant, Resolution 2017-010. Is there a presentation on this?
Maybe.
Maybe?
It's been one of those days. Okay, the Lucky House Restaurant. The request is to demo the existing restaurant and construct a new restaurant with two office suites for lease. The whole building was total 3,770 square feet. They propose outdoor seating, off-site improvements, and landscaping. The project location is by the Patterson Curve. It's this building right here, kind of sitting all by itself. Here's their site plan. There's a proposal for a shared driveway. This is a property line right here, although the applicants own both sides, both pieces of property. Caltrans wanted a shared driveway here. There will be curb, gutter, and sidewalk, which is not there currently. The current building has just a few parking spaces around it, but this proposes a nice, large parking lot that will accommodate the required parking for the uses. The truck unloading area and the dumpster area here can both be accessed through a safe path of travel and a sidewalk to the kitchen area right here. We do have handicap parking right there. The outdoor seating area is proposed for this area here, and as you can see, there's The outdoor seating area is proposed for this area here, and as you can see, there's quite a bit of landscaping, and these will have some bio swales to contain the stormwater on site. Now, the elevations, I actually have two sets of elevations, one set that was handed out to you today. This one was the first one, and kind of proposes a little bit of red, and green, and some tans in the colors. The second one, that was submitted after our staff report and packets were done, proposed more of the traditional, kind of a gold color with a red roof and red awnings, and then some red color accent at the bottom of, so basically, you would have these areas here in more of a gold color, and then the red would be accent along the bottom, the roof, and the awnings, right there. You can see there are a lot of windows. All these windows will face the east and bring a lot of nice sunlight into the building, yet you won't have that western hot sun in the in the later afternoon hours. There you go. One of the issues that we've talked about is trucks. There is a trucking firm next door, and they were notified of this meeting. Currently, some of the trucks come in this direction, and they come over to this parcel and use gasoline, the gasoline pumps there. Then they cut across these people's property to come into their parking lot. But they have a really long lot here, so as an option for them, once this property is developed, they would be able to either continue around and maybe put a gate in on the side over here. But we did have a citizen who came in and had looked at this, and was a little bit concerned about this recycling area there, and she had suggested, and she didn't come to the meeting tonight, but she had suggested that maybe the trucks could go through a gate here, right behind the dumpster and the truck parking area here. So they would get the gas, either come in from this way and get the gas and turn in, or they would circle the building and turn in there. However they decide to do it, it's not okay for them to drive across her property, and they won't be able to once the parking lot and landscaping is in. So this is just one option. This isn't required of the trucking company, it was just one option for them to look at. Environmentally, this is considered an infill, just like the garage was in the last project. It meets the requirements of SEQA for that. The site has no value as habitat for endangered, rare, or threatened species. And in fact, right now, the only landscaping you'll see on the building is two planter boxes by the front door, right up against the building. So this this project, let me go back to this map, will really do a lot to enhance not only this site, but hopefully to encourage other businesses along here and across the street to upgrade their buildings, too. So staff recommendation is that you approve this project. Again, during our review, we didn't see any red flags. A couple little difficulties came up, but their architect and engineer were willing to jump right in and help us solve those problems. And so I think the only thing is, whoops, I did that again, is that having this unloading spot and the dumpster on this parcel instead of this parcel will require an easement between the two parcels, but we don't see a problem with that since they own both parcels. Thank you.
Well, I'll open this up to the public. Would anyone like to speak to this architectural and site plan review? Please come to the podium and state your name and city of residence.
My name is Rich Murdock. I'm actually from Oakdale. My company name is RJ Murdock, Inc., and I've been a builder for twenty-five years in in this neck of the woods. First of all, I want to thank you for the effort that you put into being on the planning commission, sitting through these meetings. But is it twice a month?
No, just once.
Just once a month? I know what that's like, and my hats off to you for doing that. Donna's done a great job getting us this far. I gotta say, the city of Riverbank's been really, really user-friendly, and we're grateful for that. As a builder, you know, we've done this same kind of project several times. Donna helped us kind of think through any objections that we might come across. I think we've crossed all the bridges now, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about the project.
I have one. I mean, just, this is purely for aesthetics. Now, the view on, from Patterson, how would that be? From this, I have, I know how it's gonna look this way, but what's gonna be facing Patterson?
This right here?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is, this is what we're gonna see?
As you drive by, you'll see this, plus the outdoor seating in front of it.
Oh, so in front of it is where the, and then landscaping on the outside of the, on the street side of the outside seating?
Yes, you'll see landscaping in through here, probably some around the outdoor seating, and then you'll be able to see, the parking lot will be right here, and you'll be able to see that landscaping as well.
And there's quite a bit of landscaping on the right-hand side of that as well. That's actually, you know, the the back of the building, yeah, right there.
Looking at this drawing, it looks like it's like right there on Patterson, and I'm thinking about the outside seating, so really, how many, how many feet between Patterson and and the outside seating?
Twenty feet from behind the curb.
Right near would be twenty feet.
Oh, that's the requirement.
There's outdoors, there's outside seating there now, right?
Well, there's just a lot of empty now that you can a lot there now. You know, one of the things that is actually, it's, it's, it makes this lot pretty tough to accommodate this, is there's no curb gutter or sidewalk for a long, long, long ways in there, and it's really needed pretty badly. In order for us to do this project, Caltrans will require this curb gutter and sidewalk, and we've already got their comments back. We've had, you've got a great engineer working for the city of Riverbank, Bill Cole. He's reviewed this. A guy that did the lot split there before, he's an engineer who's reviewed this as well. So it's gone through quite a bit, quite a bit of scrutiny already. To get that one wide access is Caltrans preference, but it actually works out pretty well for both of those lots. It's a wide approach, meets Caltrans standards, and it's just about the only way they'd allow that to happen. But as you can imagine, putting that approach in and putting all that curb gutter and sidewalk across the whole front of that is pretty expensive, and so that's probably the biggest hardship that this lot has. But with our plan the way it is, it looks like it's totally doable, and we ought to get there.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a, I have a question. If you look on the left side of the property, is that the property line on the other side? Right over there?
Right here.
That's a property line right there?
Yes.
Okay. Now, that, when I was out there, down at the south, or the bottom part of that, there is a gate where the trucks go in and out of, or can go in and out of, that that truck place in the back that you were talking about?
Correct.
Now, they may be able to keep them off their property, but those trucks will possibly still go up and down that, and it doesn't look like it's a lot of room between the two. I'm just saying, you have a restaurant, and you have two offices there with trucks going by right there. I think that could be, you know, I mean, it could affect their inside, because they've actually moved the the restaurant over.
Correct.
You know, it's not where it is now, it's gonna be over on the edge of the property. So I'm just concerned about that. Trucking company, if there's not an agreement, and they keep running their trucks up and down, even just to get out to the road, it's gonna be right next to the building.
Well, this is a landscape buffer area between the building and the property line. So there will be, you know, trees and landscaping for noise issues. You really can't control what the neighbors do, and they do, let me go back here, see the aerial. So you're talking about in through here where it'll be a lot more narrow, but they have an entrance here, and the ability really to have an entrance anywhere in through here if they find it is narrow for them.
So the hope is they won't use that as much, if they have the other areas?
Well, it would be up to them. It'd be nice if you're sitting outside not to have trucks drive by, but it's just one of the constraints of the project.
Of course, and we do have Patterson going by, too.
Got Patterson, too.
No, I, I really like the idea of improving that area, so I can't be against it. I'm just concerned about in the future, if if something isn't agreed upon or that, but thank you.
Now, there is one other thing that'll help this area develop, in that, you, whoops, you had looked at earlier, last part of last year, this property down in through here, there's a four-lot subdivision and a remainder, and this street here will be dedicated, so eventually someday it'll come through that trucking area whenever they move on or decide to open this up, and then this will be opened up, this cuffway, and there will be, until that happens, there will be a twelve-foot-wide pedestrian and bicycle path that's landscaped through here, that will be taken care of by the the community facilities district will do the upkeep on it. So our hope is that people in in the Ward Avenue area will come up and be able to access this area and the the restaurant, and encourage the rest of the area to develop into something nice.
You know, this does a lot for improving the value of of the trucking company property as well, and I think that by improving, making the improvement that we're gonna do, that land will become much more developable, and you'll probably see something happen there quicker because of this project. Now, regarding the lot line, you know, one of the first drawings that we did, we could have actually placed this building right on the lot line, by putting a block wall, a firewall, on the lot line. Would have been entirely legal, there would have been some advantages to doing that because we were trying to get more parking, but the way it laid out, it's really a matter of economics, putting it ten foot away from the property line, because if you go any closer than ten feet, you have to create firewalls, and they're expensive, and then, as you said, there's gonna be some traffic going right through there, so it just made more sense. We, our, we started, we laid out our parking lot first and then worked away from it, and so the building's a little, a little smaller than than maybe it would have had to be to accommodate this, but this is, this is the best way. You know, the more square footage you get, the more square feet you're absorbing these extra costs by, you know, when you get finished with the project, you say, how much would that cost per square foot to build? And that's what determines whether it made sense to do it or not. And when you have all this improvement out front, you'd really like to have all the square footage you can get to to absorb that, and we've made the building smaller than we would have had to, but this is what makes the most sense.
Further questions? So go ahead and close public comment at this time, thank you, sir, and bring it back to Wes. Any further comments? If not, can I have a motion?
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to approve the item four point three, which is Architectural and Site Plan Review, seventeen point zero 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 three, Lucky House Restaurant.
Vice Chair King?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
And Commissioner Tobacco?
Yes.
That passes three oh.
All righty.
Congratulations, and this also has a ten-day appeal period, but if you have any questions, you know how to get ahold of me. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, item five is planning commission says none, so I guess we can skip that. Item six, county referral correspondence information.
Yep.
County referral?
No, it's in the wrong spot, but that's okay. Okay, there'd been a question about the waterfall sign, that one of the commissioners didn't think that the letters would stand out very much. Well, within a week, Public Works had painted it black, but I just forgot to mention it at our last meeting.
I noticed it immediately.
Oh, good, good.
It was so much nicer, now you can read it. Thank you.
Wonderful. They like it, too, so thank you for bringing that up.
Good upcoming meeting agenda items, information only.
Okay. Accessory dwelling units. Right now, we call them second dwelling units, but the state actually calls them accessory dwelling units. So I'm looking at our current ordinance, and I'm comparing it to the state to make sure that we accommodate all the changes that they've made. One change that they've made is that normally, if you have a home and you want to do a second dwelling unit, the second dwelling unit could not be more than
Twenty percent?
Yeah, twenty percent of the size of the existing home, and so that right, the living area, not the garage. Now, the state says that if it's a detached structure, it can be up to twelve hundred square feet, no matter what the size of the existing structure. If it is an attached dwelling unit or part of the house that's being converted into an accessory dwelling unit, it can be up to fifty percent of the size of the existing home. Another change is that you still have to provide parking for the accessory dwelling, but you can, the state says that you should allow it in setbacks if you need to. So there are some changes that that don't quite meet our code. I think there were nine of them that I'm working on right now, and so that should be coming to you shortly. It should have been a little bit earlier this year, but, you know, our plates have been full, and we're doing the best we can, and hopefully sometime this summer, I'll be able to bring this to you.
So you're trying, updating your code to match what the state says is
Correct, correct. Like, for example, every time it says second dwelling, secondary dwelling unit, I'm changing that to accessory dwelling unit, but
Are those, are those the accessory?
Dwelling unit.
Dwelling unit, that's hard to say. Are they going to be allowed in a single-residence area?
Yes.
So that it actually changes from a single residence to a
Well, they're not supposed to, let's see, they're, it used to be, back before I even started here, that in order to have a second dwelling unit in the city, you had to have a conditional use permit, and then the state came through and said that, no, you cannot require that because we need more housing for folks. And so that was changed, but that conditional use permit requirement was actually still in our code, so that's another thing that's coming out. The accessory dwelling unit is not supposed to be sold off, it's supposed to remain part of that property. It can be rented, but not sold, and it's not, I don't recall exactly, but it's not supposed to affect the density of the neighborhood. Now, I don't really see, unless a new subdivision comes in and builds new houses with brand-new accessory dwelling units, I don't see a lot of neighborhoods filling up with these, because we don't allow the piece of property to have more than fifty percent lot coverage. That means if if it's raining, fifty percent of the ground has to have the rain hit it, and so garages and houses and stuff count towards that fifty percent. So you still have to have kind of a big lot, or you have to have kind of a small house in order to get that twelve hundred square foot or less accessory dwelling unit on the property. So the fifty percent lot coverage still applies. So that will weed out some of those smaller properties from being able to get one.
Theoretically, like, I guess, a single-story home could probably just put a second, a second dwelling, accessory dwelling unit as a second, as a second story?
Yes, you could do that.
So, and there's nothing that, you know, if somebody wants to add on or take part of their house to make it into an Airbnb, or things like that, you know, now, you're assuming this is for your family, for your parents, or for things like that, but Airbnb and that they very big things nowadays, could somebody do that and rent it?
Well, currently, the city allows you to rent it out. I think the notion was it would be long-term, like a monthly, yearly lease. As far as Airbnb, we would probably have to put something in our code about that.
The city would have the ability to regulate short-term rentals, but I don't know if Riverbank has a current regulation.
We don't right now. But it is something we could put in there, you and council so desired.
Is there specific requirements if you decide to take part of your existing house and make it into a second, or?
Yes, yes.
Are there requirements that it can't be, what are the requirements for doing that if somebody wants to do that?
Well, size-wise, it can't be, it can't take up more than fifty percent of the existing house.
Okay.
And if it is attached And if it is attached, the city cannot require separate utility connections.
Okay.
But if they're detached, we can't.
Then we can, okay.
I think that's the only difference between the two. But I'm, I'm just really starting to get into it, and you'll see more, I promise.
Street parking requirements?
Well, we're supposed to kind of lighten up on the parking anyway. Traditionally, it's been a parking spot for each bedroom, but I believe that we could only require one per unit as far as the second dwelling unit goes. We can require a spot for it, but it can be, it could be underneath, so you could have a garage with your second dwelling unit, accessory dwelling unit on top. Or you could have a single story and then use part of the setback for your parking. But I believe it's just one for the accessory unit.
Interesting. Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Sure.
These little, these little tiny pockets of property that the city actually is using for like dump stations and, and the little things that everybody in the neighborhood thought was a camera, but I think it's actually some sort of a, a radio control to let the people know what's happening. Who is responsible for the maintenance of those little areas?
Well, if it's city property, it'd be our Public Works or our Recreation Department, whoever is using that site.
Always complaints, right?
If you have a complaint, I'd be more than happy to take it. Or we can, I can set you up with Michelle, have her give you a call if you'd like to discuss something. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else have any further comments? And we are adjourned at 6:52.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jim.